Commissioner Andrew Goff.
Present.
Commissioner Crystal Malari.
Present.
Vice Chair Devett Muhammad.
Present.
And Chair Brando Cruz.
I am present. Okay, at this time, I'm going to be opening a public comment. This time is reserved for members of the public to address the Planning Commission on items of interest that are not on the agenda and are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. It is recommended that speakers limit their comments to three minutes each, and it is requested that no comments be made during this period on items on the agenda. And members of the public wishing to address the Planning Commission on items on the agenda should comment via email prior to the start of the meeting or to verbally comment on an item during the meeting and click the Raise Your Hand button if joining by computer or press star nine if joining by phone when an item is called. The Planning Commission is prohibited by law from taking any action on matters discussed that are not on the agenda, and no adverse conclusions should be drawn if the Planning Commission does not respond to public comment at this time. Speakers are asked to please speak clearly and provide their name. Any handouts for distribution to the Planning Commission must be emailed by 3:00 PM on the meeting day. At this time, I open public comment.
Do we have comment from anybody in council chambers? Okay, do we have any comment from people, from anyone downstairs in the auxiliary room? Okay, and there is nobody on Zoom raising their hand, so no public comment.
Thank you, Nicole. At this time, I close public comment. Director Cooper, are there any agenda changes?
None from legal counsel.
Any agenda changes, Director Cooper?
Sorry. Chair Cruz, no, there are no agenda changes tonight.
Thank you. At this time, I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar of the August meeting.
A second.
Rule call, please.
Yes. Commissioner Eric Altman is absent. Commissioner Andrew Goff.
Aye.
Commissioner Devett Muhammad, or excuse me, Vice Chair. Commissioner Crystal Malari.
Aye.
And Chair Brando Cruz.
That'd be aye. Thank you, Planning Commission. Okay, moving on to public hearings. Our first item on number two would be the Watson Ranch Lot 8 Design Permit Staff.
William Hee will provide a brief presentation.
Is this supposed to start momentarily?
Oh, yeah.
Good evening, Chair Cruz, members of the Planning Commission.
Oh, there we go. Good evening, Chair Cruz, members of the Planning Commission and members of the public. William Hee here with the Planning Division. Happy to be here to give a presentation on the Watson Ranch Lot 8 Design Permit. This project was, had a vesting tentative subdivision map that was approved in March of this year, and we're coming back to do the design permit for this site. Watson Ranch Lot 8 is positioned right on the north side of Cartier Street in Watson Ranch. The site is, to the north of the site is a future community park. To the south is the Harvest subdivision. To the west is the future Lot 7 project, which is still in review. And to the east is the Promontory subdivision, which was approved last year as well. Here is a site plan of the approved subdivision from, I guess it was this March. The site contains 25 single-family lots, and it's in the medium-density residential 16 zone. There are three non-residential parcels, which is parcel A in the far left of the screen in the west, which is a landscaping lot, and then two pedestrian pasos, which is parcels B and C. And to the far east is the vine trail. Here are some of the planning and zoning information, as well as the project description. The site was 2.5, 2.3 acres. The main access would be from Cartier Street to 25 single-family homes. All of the homes are going to be two-story homes. There are two floor plans. One is 2,124 square feet, and the second one is 2,446 square feet. Three architectural styles, which is the farmhouse ranch and traditional, similar to the Harvest and Artisan, which also have three styles. And then the lots, they range from about 3,600 square feet to 5,600 square feet. The builder will provide a, some landscaping for the front yards, and they each contain at a minimum one shade tree. I'll talk a little bit more about the landscaping at the later slide. Here's some site photos for the site. The left one is from Lot 8 facing east, looking at Dottra Street. It is in the middle of grading at this time. And the one on the right is from Lot 8 looking west. So they're close to finishing the grading. And here is a aerial photo of the site, courtesy of the applicant. The Lot 8 is shown in the red trapezoid, a rectangle, so it is north of Cartier Street, and then you can see the vine trail in the far distance. And as you can see, the, a lot of the houses on Marcus are already done for the Harvest subdivision, and they're starting to work on the new houses along Goldback Street, which is south of the Erickson Street. Here are the, the architecture, which features farmhouse ranch and traditional style. There's three different styles and then two different floor plans, so I have six, six of the photos for you, architectural concepts for you here. And here's an example of the ranch style. I believe this is the Plan Set 1. It includes decorative siding, decorative stone veneer on the bottom floors, earth tone colors, and also some decorative sill and trim for the windows. Here is an example of floor plan 1, the 2,124 square foot plan. It is four bedrooms on the second floor, and it comes with a two, two-car garage and living in, the dining room and kitchen is on the first floor. Both of the concepts include an option for an outdoor patio room, and that's something that the applicant can, can talk more about. Here's the second one, the 2,446 square foot plan. And this one includes a bedroom on the first floor, and then the second floor, there's like a den, which adds living space. There's just a few site-specific issues, and I'll go over them pretty quickly. There's the enhanced aesthetic wrapping required, the community park, and the landscaping efforts. The first one, this is a condition of approval that was already on the vesting tentative map, but I wanted to bring this back to everyone's attention, is that enhanced aesthetic wrapping is required for corner lots. And so the two lots that are impacted are Lot 1 on the far west and then Lot 25. And those two will have a little bit more enhancement than just your typical mid-block home. The second one is the Public Park. This is the, the parcel that is most adjacent to the future Public Park. The Public Park is approximately 11.3 acres. It is, it is one of the pieces that will help transition between the medium-density residential 16 zone and the medium-density residential 12 zone, which is a little bit less dense than what we have in Harvest and Artisan, and also the future Lot 7. At this time, there's no schedule for the park, but access to the park is mainly through Marcus Road. And then landscaping. So the applicant has provided a preliminary landscaping plan, and each lot will have one, a front yard and one shade tree. The four types of trees that's proposed is the strawberry tree, eastern red bud, sweet bay, and European olive. The lot adjacent to Marcus Drive, which is parcel A, will be landscaped, and I think it will include a monument sign, but I will double-check with Terry. And then there are two pedestrian pasos that will be landscaped with lighting, and that, that was part of the subdivision plan that was approved. And that was it for this issues. We did our extensive outreach campaign. We started in August 20th. We did our usual public noticing to, to the residents and tenants and our gov delivery. Then we had our, our newspaper publishing, and, and, and we also have a public sign for the site as well. We didn't receive any comments at, for this project. And then in, in regards to secret determination and staff's recommendation, the, the project is part of the Watson Ranch Specific Plan Final Environmental Impact Report, and it does not change the mitigation measures for the, the final EIR. And so it, staff's recommendation is to approve the design permit. That's all that I have. I can take a couple of questions, but the applicant is also here, too.
Thank you, William. Applicant Terry, would you like to make some comments? Thank you.
All right.
Sure. That's probably the first one.
Yeah, that's, that one's fine.
This one?
Yeah, that's fine. That's fine. Thank you.
Good evening, Planning Commission members. I'm Terrence McGrath, developer of Watson Ranch. Thank you, William. Thank you, city staff. You guys have done a great job. I just thought it might be helpful to kind of give you a little context to how this has come about, because it's a little bit out of order, or seemingly probably a little out of order. So as most of you know, originally that was the school site. And it was a combination of school site and park, and the area that I'm referring to is the area north, directly north of those 25 lots. Obviously, the school is no longer going there. The park is redesigned into a much bigger park, so we combined the school site with the, what we called back then Park A, which was to the east. So now it's a much bigger park. But I wanted to point out a couple of things. So in the far, it would be the southeast corner up by Lot, I think it's 25, so that we've rough graded, sheet graded the park site, because we've just started construction on the extension of Marcus Road to the north. And the grade change in that southeast corner between Lot 25 and that corner of the park is about 20 feet, might even be closer to 22, 23 feet. So those lots step up pretty significantly as they're moving west to east. In some cases, I think they step up as much as two to three feet, lot to lot. It's great for the home sites, because you have uninterrupted views as you're stepping up the site. The reason I point this out is a couple of reasons. One is that's a pretty significant grade change between the backyards of, of those homes. And, and so a couple of things that come to mind is, should the backyard fences be as high as a normal backyard fence? Because unlike a lot of the other neighborhoods like Artisan or Harvest, where somebody can, in theory, look into your backyard, that fence is, no one's going to be able to look into your backyard, meaning from the park site, especially in the, in the homes that go from probably Lot 6 or 7 all the way up to 25. Because again, that, that, those, those 25 lots are, are going up in elevation from west to east. So that's one issue. Second issue, and I've had some debate with the city over this, city staff, and I think city manager Jason Holly and I disagree slightly on this, and this is where I wanted to give you some context. Typically, we would be doing the design permit first. We're doing the design permit last. So the lots are built, the sidewalks are in, the curb cuts are in, the vesting tentative map is done, and the final map has been recorded. So, and we, we did it in reverse because of the change with the school district and the change with the park, and so on and so forth. So my concern on the pasos, and I've expressed this to city staff as well as city manager Jason Holly, is I'm not so concerned with the, with the lower paso, because that's essentially a grade. So where that street continues, where that street continues there, north, that lot is more or less a grade with the park. And the pasos are, I think, 88 feet long by 20 feet wide. And that's city property. That's not Watson Ranch property. My assumption is, it's not clear whether the HOA is maintaining this, those or not. And that's something that we'll have to circle back to. But my concern is the upper paso, the one at the very northern, or the very eastern end, I think when you're getting between lots 22 and 23. At the end of that paso, obviously, there's a pretty big fall of approximately 20, 20, 22 feet down to the park. I'm also a little concerned, not so, I mean, obviously topography is one issue. The other issue is, unlike the interface of Harvest to Rio Del Mar, where the street's essentially dead-end, and there's a big olive tree at the end of those streets, and the public can see down those streets, and so on and so forth. I'm a little concerned that, especially the, the paso on the eastern end becomes a place to hang out. And the vine trail, which is just, you know, three lots to the east of that paso, gives you access to the park, gives you access from the neighborhoods to the park, and so on and so forth. And both those homes on each side of the paso would be impacted by whatever's happening there. And, you know, that home probably, the roof line at a home sits at somewhere around probably 22, 23 feet. So you have a 20-foot-wide paso, you have a house line that's up, you know, 21, 22, 23 feet, and it's 88 feet long. And so I just wanted to point that out in terms of sort of, you know, difference between looking at a set of plans on the chalkboard versus what they, what it actually looks like in the field. And city manager Jason Holly actually went out and walked the site, and again, he and I have a slightly different take on this. But I wanted to point out the pasos, and I also wanted to point out the back fence, because, you know, if they wanted to build frankly somewhat shorter fences so they could see out over the park and views to the west and northwest, I don't think I would be, I would object to that, you know, as part of the homeowners association. So anyway, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them, but I wanted to give you a little context. Thanks for the time.
Great, thank you, Terry. Planning Commissioners, what are your questions? Commissioner Goff.
Sorry, one other thing to add. Jill Williams, the architect from KTGY, is on Zoom if you have any questions about materials and et cetera. The other thing I should point out, because we've already recorded the final map, I think the city owns the, the land under the pasos. So it makes it a little more difficult to unwind this thing if we wanted to unwind it. Thank you.
Terry, if you want to stay right there, I've just got, you know, you mentioned three things, which are three things that I had down on my list. One was the paso on who was responsible for that, so thank you for covering that. Backyard fences was a concern for me, just because it's back to a park versus home-to-home. I know when I was reading, it talked about good neighbor fences. Is it still the intention that back fence to be a good neighbor fence?
Boy, that's a, I mean, I could, I could give you the party line on the good neighbor fence, or I could give you, you know, building a fence that's, that's going to stand the test of time. So let me give you the answer according to the guy that's going to be involved in this for a number of years to come. I'll break it down into two pieces. One, the good neighbor fence on, I would say, the first eight to 10 lots, you want a normal height fence, so you want a 6-0 fence. And I think we discussed this either at, at the subdivision, at the mapping process, I think this came up, if I remember correctly, about it being something different than the good neighbor fence, and I think actually you raised it. I think it should be more along the lines of what we built on Rio Del Mar. And again, I, I think in the first six, seven, eight lots, it's very noticeable, so if you're in the park, you're more or less at grade or, or slightly below grade from the park when you're looking up at the, at those lots. Once you cross probably nine or 10, I could get a lot more specific if, if I was actually looking at the topo, but once you get to nine or 10, you start to get, you know, because over those 25 lots, remember you're climbing up to as high as 25 feet. So the fence almost becomes irrelevant, but I think you'd want some consistency in that quote-unquote "good neighbor" fence from the back of the first lot all the way to the top of 25. The only difference would be, you know, is there some flexibility to the homeowner at five, five and a half, six, six and a half, seven feet, et cetera? Because as you get up higher and higher, if you're in the park, you're never seeing into that person's backyard.
Right. But that fence is gonna, it's just gonna step up.
It's just, and it, that fence naturally steps up anyway, lot to lot. So.
Okay. The other question, the landscape lot that is at the very end, right between, well, Marcus Road and Lot 1, is that city land as well?
I believe that's city land. Is that William? I see you rolling your eyes. Because I know we are maintaining, we still own the one at Rio Del Mar and Marcus. And I could, Barbara I know is listening, so I could text her and, and get the answer to that. My sense is, it's, that one's probably a city property.
Well, it feeds right into the park there, so.
Yeah, and so it, it would be part of the overall, my, my sense is it's part of the overall Watson Ranch HOA.
Okay, and you mentioned Marcus Road is continuing north, because in the plans, it looked like it was, you know, finishing off there.
Yes.
But it's going to continue north.
So what we're doing right now, I think I just saw today, it come through city staff's second round or third round to our subdivision improvement plans, or their, our improvement plans to Marcus. But we've, we've made an agreement with the city to go ahead and go at risk, meaning we're, we're building it essentially, if something is not according to what gets approved, it's on our risk. But we're going to build it right to the wetlands, and what we're trying to do is essentially get a head start on winter, because the last couple of winters have just, just absolutely killed us in terms of working days. And so we wanted, we want to get as far as we can, including now that the park has been sheet graded, there's a lot of water flow, as you can imagine, out of those foothills from east to west, and so we want to get the storm drain inlets and the storm drain in place in order to put that into Storm Detention D, which will really help. And then we'll come back next spring and do the bridge over the wetlands under a separate project permit.
Okay. And my final question really has to do with the vine trail and access to the park. Is that just open? Is that the intention? Or is that going to be?
I, you know, the, the park piece of it has not been designed. My sense of it is, it, you'll, there'll be clear areas where you can access the park from the vine trail. My sense is it would probably have some separation, just in terms of, you know, you don't, let's just say there were soccer fields on that end of it, you know, you don't want the soccer ball going across the, the vine trail and somebody's on their bike. But my sense is there'd be some established access points between vine trail and park and vice versa.
I just thought that might alleviate some of the passage on that eastern paso as well. If it's open closer there, then more likely they would go around, especially if they're coming up the trail versus dipping in and cutting through.
That's kind of my sense is that, you know, yes, there's a few homes in Harvest that would use that eastern paso, but for the most part, you're probably pushing your stroller or walking or taking your bike out to the vine trail. The other issue, because the park hasn't been designed, at the end of that paso, is it stairs?
Yeah.
Or is it ADA? If it's, if the design of that park requires ADA to that paso, that is a very, very expensive ADA ramp to get from the park to that paso and vice versa.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the Commissioners? Okay, at this time, we open up to a public comment.
Is there any public comment from members in council chambers? Okay, is there any comment from Room 104 downstairs? I'm being told no. Is there anyone on Zoom that would like to make public comment? Please raise your hand now. We have no public comment.
Thank you, Nicole. At this time, I close public comments.
Excuse me, Commissioner. One comment from legal counsel. The city did receive a written comment from the California Housing Defense Fund. You know, you know, that comment has been received and noted for the record. Of note, American Canyon has consistently and successfully pursued opportunities that have both enhanced the stock of housing within the city and has taken actions for the preservation of the environment. For example, the city has met its regional housing needs as set forth in the Regional Housing Needs Assessment. The state HCD has approved the city's general plan housing element. The city has adopted greenhouse gas ordinances, and specifically for the Watson Ranch project and the specific plan associated with it. And with this lot, you know, with this Lot 8, there are, you know, affordable housing commitments as a connection with this project. So just noting that for the record in response to the written comment that was received.
Thank you, Attorney Schwartz. Any other public comments?
No one's raising their hand?
Thank you, Nicole. At this time, I close public comment. I'm going to circle back to the Commissioners for any more further comments. There being none at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion.
Chair, I move that we adopt a resolution approving a design permit for Watson Ranch Lot 8 to develop 25 single-family homes on a 2.3 acres within the medium-density residential 16 zoning district located north of Cartier Street. Assessor's parcel number 059-430-004 and 059-430-037. File number PL 240022.
I second.
It's been regularly moved and seconded. Rule call, please.
Yes, Commissioner Eric Altman is absent. Commissioner Andrew Goff.
Aye.
Commissioner Crystal Malari.
Aye.
Vice Chair Devett Muhammad.
Aye.
Chair Brando Cruz.
Aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Okay, moving on to item number three on public hearings, we have Oat Hill Multi-Family Residential Major Modification. Staff report or applicant?
All right. Thank you, Chair Cruz and Planning Commission. Brent Cooper, committee director. This is a follow-up meeting to your last Planning Commission meeting, in which you discussed 14 amendments proposed by the applicant for the Oat Hill project. The item was continued to this hearing because there were two of the 14 items that the commission requested the applicant to provide additional information, which was included in your packet. that the commission requested the applicant to provide additional information, um, which, uh, was included in your packet. The applicant is here. They may want to just review that for you. I have prepared just for ease of, uh, making a motion. I know that there was a straw poll vote at the last meeting, but, um, this would be, in my words, the for-real motion, um, just to affirm each of the amendments. Um, I do have them available, um, in a, uh, hard copy on the dais for each of you. There are some on the counter for the public, um, and I have it available also in PowerPoint. If need be, I can, I can present them one at a time, um, that way, whatever works best for the commission. And so at this point, I would turn it back to you if you would like staff to summarize the, uh, the follow-up, if you'd like the applicant to, um, or if you're comfortable, it's really, uh, whatever you'd like to see happen.
Thank you, Director Cooper. I'll go and have, uh, you summarize, being that we have, um, one of the commissioners, Commissioner Mohammed, she was absent during that time, and maybe she wants a quick review. Actually, all of us can use a review, so by all means, please review it.
Um, when you say review each of the items, I can quickly go through them or just the follow-ups?
Just the follow-ups. Thank you.
Okay. Um, let's see. For those that, that have a copy, and there are some on the, on the credenza there, maybe what I'll do is, is so everybody can see what we're, we're looking at. Maybe what I'll do, because there are some folks here that weren't at the last meeting, um, and we do have one commissioner that wasn't here. So just maybe I'll, I'll quickly go through, and if anyone has any, any questions, then they can, they know what to do. Um, so, uh, among the changes, uh, one proposed was, uh, modifying the roof material uh, from a brown concrete tile to black antique black asphalt shingles. On the left there is what was approved by the city council, and on the right is what's proposed by the applicant. So this component of the picture is, is just the roof. There are two tiers to the Oat Hill project. The lower one's called parcel B, the upper one's called parcel A. For the upper one, the applicant has, uh, proposed to modify the roof pitch so that it's a little shallower, and that would enable a taller ceiling on the third floor without having to raise the overall height of the building. Um, and then there are some roof modifications as well to, uh, make the construction perhaps more simplified. Um, there was a lot of discussion over siding and trim material, mostly the siding. Um, the applicant would like to, um, replace what was approved with, uh, stucco or hardy panel, uh, stucco appearance, flat, um, uh, exterior for the lower two floors. Um, and then a component, large component of the third floor had initially board and batten siding, which is hor, which is vertical. Um, and then, uh, some of that was changed through a minor modification in parcel B for a horizontal lap siding from the third floor, and the applicant would like to replace all of it with stucco. I did read, though, in the applicant's submittal that they are willing to propose lap siding on the third floor as an alternative. The trim around the windows and doors and things were, uh, was a fiber cement, and the change would, uh, would replace that with a stucco trim. Change was some of the ground floor patios. Uh, it's a little small press for those looking at the screen here. Um, the ground floor patio, uh, was planned and approved with a stucco masonry wall and a gate that led to the nearby walkway. The proposal is to remove the gate and replace the masonry and stucco with cedar wood. There were some changes to the buildings themselves, because as Oat Hill was graded, there were some unexpected, um, geological conditions that required a little different way in which it was graded, which, which then compressed the, uh, area on the lower tier and expanded the one on the upper tier. And so some of the buildings were, were, they were modified, uh, but similar in appearance. So, um, the, some of the changes here we're looking at is from, uh, initially, there was a 12-plex building that would be replaced with a 15-plex building on the right. And then down below, there was a 17-plex building, plex meaning number of apartments per building, to an 18-plex building. Um, another change proposed is, um, there are, there are garages that are at the ground floor of the apartment buildings. Many of them had windows, and the proposal is to remove the windows. This was one of the areas that the commission requested additional information from the applicant from the last meeting, but there was a proposal to remove a ground floor window, um, on the, uh, 17-plex building. Um, they're shown with red arrows where the windows were proposed to be removed. And the commission asked the applicant to take a look at how, if there's a way in which to retain the windows. So they did propose to retain the windows with a extra soundproofing. There's some, um, mechanical equipment that would make it noisy, um, and looks like they've solved the problem by keeping the windows that are more soundproof. Um, the color schemes have been changed, uh, a little bit. Um, on the left here, there are, I would say, my description, a little more earth tone colors. Um, uh, this one is sort of a taupe and tan on the left, and then on the right hand is, is blue, sort of gray, and, um, so there's a little change there. Um, and then below also another sort of darker blue color, and then on the right-hand side, which is proposed, is more, uh, of a darker gray and tan, or gray and white. This was another area where there was a proposed follow, a pro, a follow-up from the commission. Um, and this had to do with the, we'll call it amenity buildings. So that's the recreation building, pool building, and some of the buildings on site. They were approved with a board and batten, that's that horizontal siding, and the applicant proposed to remove it entirely and replace it with stucco. As well, the roof there was proposed to be a bronze metal, and the applicant proposed the same roof style as the apartments, which is a kind of antique black shingle. Uh, and so there are also some changes where there was manufactured stone, and I think it was on perhaps the chimney areas, and that would be replaced with a masonry panel system. So we have the, the approved on the left, and the commission wasn't quite comfortable with recommending the city council approve, uh, all stucco for these buildings. And so they asked the applicant to come back with, uh, kind of a compromise with some, uh, uh, lap siding or, or board and batten siding to keep on the buildings. And so the applicant did come back with a proposal for, uh, lap siding on portions of the clubhouse and pool building. Um, there are some stucco, but, but there's still, uh, in my opinion, a fair amount of, of lap siding, um, that they proposed to keep. Here are some of the other, uh, amenity buildings. They're, they're pretty small, um, so if you have a, but anyway, um, they too all had the horizontal siding, and they've been, uh, replaced with, with, uh, stucco. Um, and, and the roof material is changed as well. These buildings, as well as the recreation buildings that you just saw on the last screen, there were some amendments to the windows, um, from picture windows to, or windows with mullions. I, I'm not altogether sure. I know they're different, but I don't think they're different in appearance, so I'm, I'm not very good at describing how they're different. And here we kind of point out, at least graphically, um, how it's depicted, how the change would look. The red arrow is pointing to the ones that were approved versus the ones proposed. Some, uh, changes to exterior light fixtures, a little more traditional to a more modern style. And then, um, there were a number of, uh, walls on the site largely because of grading, um, needs. As you start to rip up a hill, you find things you probably didn't expect. Um, and so some of the walls were in addition to what was proposed before, and some were a little higher. Um, this is an MSE wall, mechanically stabilized earth, has a very nice texture to it. Um, they were taller than originally proposed. Um, there's another style called a soil nail wall. Um, this one wasn't identified with a, a textural coat, um, and so that's been shown here. And, uh, it looks familiar, and that's how the applicant described it, to the soil nail wall that you might find on, uh, Highway 12 as you head out towards Fairfield. You look to your left there, there's a cut hillside, so that's kind of the, the idea here. And then there's a third type of style called, um, CMU. They're concrete MU. The concrete blocks. Um, and they would be, uh, these were not proposed before, but were needed because of the grading. Um, they would have a textured coat, uh, painted with a taupe color and additional landscaping to help screen them as you look up at the hill, um, from down below. And that's a, a quick overview of all of the changes and two of the follow-ups, uh, that the commission asked for. Uh, follow-ups being with the retention of the window on the ground floor and, uh, a compromise, uh, that would still provide some lap siding on the amenity buildings.
Thank you, Director Cooper. Planning Commissioners, what are your questions?
I got one. Um, maybe you guys can refresh my memory, but did we request, uh, maybe some models or some material items that we would kind of help paint the picture of, of these requests?
I think we're just looking for pictures, which I think they submitted, and that was really about the siding change.
Thank you.
I just have one question. It has to do with the different textures on all the retaining walls. To me, that's just a little odd to have three different textures on retaining walls. I would think, think some type of uniformity between all the walls when it comes to their appearance and their textures would be more conducive to an entire development. Um, is that something that is possible? I know one of them is the cement MU or whatever you call it wall. Um, the other ones are a little bit different, but is there a way of unifying the texture, the, the aesthetics of them?
Um, that's a great question. I think I would, um, ask the applicant to respond to that. I'm, I'm sure there, because there are different types of walls, there's a reason, but I, I can't tell you for the reason for it.
Thank you, Director Cooper, for summarizing that. And hello, you guys have seen me a number of times here. I'm Stevie. I'm here to represent the ownership group for the Oat Hill project. And the reason for the different retaining walls is just the different type of grading, and that's required for those walls. So for the CMU walls, those are more there for, to meet ADA complacency, make sure that we don't have steep grades throughout the site, whereas the soil nail wall is, it's just a method of building a wall. So rather than excavating a huge chunk of earth, you pick at it a little bit, and then you kind of leave what's there, and then you literally put these huge nails into the earth to retain that earth, and then the architectural feature would just make it look nice. Um, and the MSE wall, it's a mechanically stabilizing earth wall, so it's there to stabilize the earth. Since it's at that slope, it's a huge difference. But to answer your question, the color chosen for the CMU wall was an approved color by city staff. Um, if the commission prefers a more gray color, I mean, we could also explore that route, but that was just a color that was chosen from city staff. We put up four samples.
So as it stands now at the request that you have here, it's three different shades of wall?
No, so the CMU wall, well, the CMU walls would all be the same color.
Okay.
The MSE wall will be as is, which it's this, um...
Yeah, yeah, that decorative block?
Yes. And then the soil nail wall, we haven't picked a color, but we would probably choose something to also kind of match the site.
My question is, is there any way to have the CME wall look like the, the other one with the design? I mean, just the uniformity of the, in the looks of the walls is really my question.
Yeah, it's, uh, it's just a different type of block that's used. Um, and so it's, it wouldn't be feasible for us, just cost-wise. This wall is a lot more expensive than a CMU, um, block wall. So just, I mean, we've already built one of the walls as well, so having to go back, take it out, and then build it with a different type of material would be expensive. Sure.
Also, um, Commissioner Goff, we also have a condition for the CMU walls, that they be, have a landscape screening. So there's a, a very detailed, uh, palette of different types of evergreen and flowering bushes and shrubs. So the, the idea is, is that they are actually obscured by the landscaping. Uh, fortunately, they're not particularly tall, so it's, it's quite likely they're of a height that can be, uh, screened by landscaping.
And that's the walls that probably stands out the most to me, just because they're just huge blocks. There's not much decorative to it. So if they're screened off by some type of landscape or something like that, that alleviates some of my concern there. Thank you.
Yes. I just wanna say thank you, Director Cooper, for that overview. I feel like I missed a whole class. And thank you, Russell Square, for, um, listening to us and coming up with the compromise. I, I'm glad you put the window back.
Yes.
Um, but I don't have, oh, I just wanted to say, I, one day I was driving, the other day I was driving back to American Canyon from Napa, and the sun was setting, and it looked really nice.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, it, it's starting to get there, and it's starting to look.
Getting there.
It's, it's, yeah, it's pretty, and the views would be phenomenal.
Thank you. I need to help tack on to what Commissioner Goff was mentioning. Describe to me what does that greenery or scenery would look like for those walls, because I too feel the same way and share the same sentiment on just kind of looking, trying to visualize the aesthetics of how that would.
Yeah, so they would be completely screened. I mean, the walls aren't tall at all. Uh, they'll be screened by shrubs, trees, um, and just different types of landscape that are native to California. So it would look really blended. You wouldn't be able to see the wall. And with that color that was chosen, it kind of blends into the earth too, so it's not like a visibly obvious wall. Correct. And then there's also the wall that you could see now that's been built that hasn't been painted, or there isn't any landscape in front of it. Um, they vary, so some are as small as two feet, and some are as tall. I think the tallest one is this one on parcel B that do go up to six feet.
And the maintenance and the upkeep will be?
Yes, that is part of our, um, conditions of approval to always maintain the landscape and, um, just the maintenance of the entire property.
Great. Well, thank you, Stevie and Director Cooper. At this time, I'm going to open it to public comment.
Is there any comment from anyone in council chambers? Okay, any comment from room 104 downstairs? I'm getting a no. Any comment from anyone online? We have no public comment.
Thank you, Nicole. At this time, I close public comment, and I'll circle back to the planning commissioners for any additional comments or questions. There being none, at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve. I'd like to make a motion to approve a resolution recommending the city council, the City of American Canyon, California, approve a major modification to the Oak Hill multifamily residential project parcel A and B, design permits located on the east side of Oak Hill, south of Napa Junction Road, PL 240009.
I second.
It's been regularly moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Yes, Commissioner Eric Altman is absent. Commissioner Andrew Goff?
Aye.
Commissioner Crystal Malari?
Aye.
Vice Chair Devet Mohammed?
Aye.
And Chair Brando Cruz.
Aye. Thank you, planning commissioners. Moving on to management and staff oral reports. As Director Cooper runs back to his desk. Director Cooper, the floor is yours.
I had a little foresight. I would just would have taken my sheet over there with me, but. To give you some of the highlights of, of projects going on in the community development department. We have a large project we're looking forward to seeing advance. This is the SDG 220 conditional use permit. It's a 220,000 square foot warehouse on Commerce Court. The environmental impact report is completed, public review, response to comments are pretty much finished. And we expect to bring that to your next planning commission meeting. So that's a nice milestone. The environmental impact report has statements of overriding considerations for the, and so under city ordinance, the project will need to advance to city council for final approval. This is a conditional use permit. Normally, it would be rest with the planning commission, but it's the overriding considerations that requires it to move forward to the city council. We are, let's see, other discretionary projects going on. The Watson Ranch Lot Seven, that was sort of referenced in tonight's presentation. It's just immediately west of the one, Lot Eight. This is KB Homes with 136 single-family homes. We expect to bring that to your next meeting as well in October. Kind of moving on to major building and grading projects, the Hampton Inn Hotel. We are reviewing building permits for that. We've gone through a couple of reviews. It's moving along, and we're making sure it has all of the features that were approved as part of that project. The Napa Cove Apartments, just down the street here. The first building, there are three buildings, and the first of the three buildings was approved for occupancy. And so expect to see residents moving in there soon. And so we're, we're looking forward to that. There are still some site improvements and things that need to be done, and we're going to make sure that before the third building is approved for occupancy, that they're all completed. Let's see. Kind of moving on to our general plan. We'll be releasing the environmental impact report for the general plan on Saturday. So that's a, a nice milestone. That'll start a 45-day public review period that would end on November 4th. And per our policy, the planning commission will review a workshop for the EIR also at your next meeting, which happens to be a day I'll be on vacation, but I'll be joining you via Zoom. That's just how things work. Let's see. And then coming up at their council meeting next Tuesday, there are two important proclamations for notable events. October is the National Community Planning Month. And so our chair is invited to receive a proclamation, but the commission is there as well to share and bask in the celebration. It's also happens to be, October is National Community Code Enforcement Appreciation Month. And so there'll be a proclamation for our code enforcement officer as well next Tuesday. So that's my update.
Great. Thank you, Director Cooper, for the updates. Moving on to commissioner items, planning commissioners, do you have any items? Commissioner Goff? Commissioner Mamreel? Vice Chair Mohammed? At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'd make a motion to adjourn.
Time is 7:26. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.